Public hearing on the fiscal year 2024-2025 tax rate. And then there'll be a meeting after that, depending on how the public hearing goes. Dr. Budget and Dr. Ray. When Dr. Ray has reflected all commissioners are here without the rule of court. With that, the form requirement, I'd like to choose. Please stand in the presence of the ladies and gentlemen.
allegiance to flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I give allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, thank you for another day. We thank you for many blessings, though we ask you to keep your head on each and ever constituent in our presence today, that our meeting will go good. Lord, we ask that you do the right thing that is pleasing in your side, God, when we get the praise from Jesus.
All right, out of number four, the public hearing. The proposed budget will raise the overall total property taxes in last year, driven by $1,111,200 to $2.829%. Of that amount, $492,965 tax revenue could be raised if new property added to the tax rule this year, a tax rate of 0.50776 per $100 valuation had been proposed by the governing body of San Jacinto County, Texas. Proposed tax rate of 0.50776 per 100. No new revenue rate is 0.48071 per 100. Voter approval rate, 0.50776 per 100. The no new revenue tax rate is the rate for the 2024 tax year that will raise the same amount of property tax revenue from San Jacinto County from the same properties both in the 2023 year and the 2024 year. The voter approval rate is the highest rate that San Jacinto County may adopt without voting in elections to seek voter approval of the rate. The proposed tax rate is greater than the no new revenue rate. This means that San Jacinto County is proposing to increase property taxes for the 2024 tax year. The proposed tax rate is greater. It's not greater, there's none, than the proposed tax rate. It says it's greater than the voter approval tax rate. That's wrong. It is the same as the tax, as the voter approval rate. It should be, we can't be missing that. It's not, it's the same rate, which is 0.5776. They're the same. And as a result, San Jacinto County is not required to vote in election, at which voters may accept or reject the proposed tax rate. However, you may express your support or opposition to the proposed tax rate by contacting the members of San Jacinto County at their offices or attending the public hearing mentioned above. Your tax owed under any of the rates mentioned above can be calculated as follows: property tax amount, and the tax rate times the taxable value of your property dot dot hundred. As anybody that's here will know, we had this challenging budget here. We had hurricane come through, a tear up the roof, and the insurance company said we ought to patch it for $69,000. And they said, by the way, if it's a named storm, your production goes up to about $50,000, so that leaves it on the hook for about $19,000. But that's what we've been doing for 30 years. So, I think why else have we chose to fix it right this time? So, we have a $450,862 debt associated with the cost to fix the jail roof that was on in your every year budget. So, that's a challenge. First hurdle we had to jump over, because the roof was damaged, the jail commission in order to protect the safety of inmates decided to close the jail until we get it fixed and get it re-certified and so forth. So, with no revenue coming in for the last couple of months, the projected revenue went from $600,000 down to $240,000, which is a $360,000 unexpected debt that we had over lack of revenue. Then, I'm just hitting a few high points of challenges in the budget. For reasons that I'm still scratching my head over, we got the appraisal district bill. Values went up, 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 up. There's something, but their budget only went up $11,000 this year, but our share of their budget went up $156,000. I don't understand. I know why. It's so because they took, they lowered the bills for the schools. So, we got a $156,000 increase in front of the budget that only went up $11,000. Who expects that to happen? I've never seen that happen in my business since 1998. I've never seen, I've never seen that happen. I would have been fine with just saying, we'll pay a whole $8,000 increase. Had we been able to got away with that, we'd have saved $145,000. Anyway, those are some of the high points of the budget, which made quite a challenge. Now, we've had numerous public hearings and workshops. I think, I forget the date, month or so ago, we all got in there and we actually went through every section of the budget, and politically cut something out of mine there, every one of them. That's how we conducted the event, the potential raises, which my original budget that I proposed, that's just a starting point. It did have no raises in it, I believe. After all that work and going through, we have determined that we have put in the budget a $1,000 raise per employee. That's what's in the budget. I guess without any further ado, anybody who wants to stand up and text the mic and comment, please do. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you going through all the effort. And I think if you do recall, you know, years back, when I was commissioner, we used to have two of these budget hearings. And I think Mr. McNally remembers that.
Not to take away any kind of, but we ended up doing this twice anyway. We advertised it twice. We have liked with the old town, but it wasn't my choice. Other things caused it to happen. I mean, that's glad we did that. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Anyway, I just want to use my usual disclaimer. I'm over 65, and so what's been going on with them raising the values and everything, the calculation, y'all keep cutting the rate, my taxes keep going down. Thank you. Anyway, that being said, I just want to stand up here and give you some comments, and just purely comments from my past experience managing companies and working for companies and doing things. But I've lived through a number of times where we've had inflation, and there's been deflation, there's been all kinds of different things that have gone on in my lifetime. And I remember back when, before Reagan, before Ronald Reagan became president, Jimmy Carter was president, we had a period of inflation, not completely dissimilar to what's kind of going on today. The price of gasoline doubled or tripled. Some of y'all will probably remember that.
Remember, you have to get in line to get gasoline.
Get in line, yeah, because of embargo, all these different things. And I can tell you, when Ronald Reagan took over, and he tried to change the way we were, things were going in the government, changed it from where there was too much money chasing too few products, to what was called a Reaganomics back then, but it was actually supply side economics, where supply a product, what prices that product. And so, it's not too much money. And the other day, I heard, and I didn't get the exact numbers, but it was, I think it was $500 trillion next year is coming up to be funded by government banks. And everybody is really, really scared of that, the people that are looking at it. And that's an awful lot of money. And now, a lot of that money comes from all these COVID, I'm going to say, plans, the CARES Act, and all those different, I don't remember what, there's all these acronyms for them, I don't even know what they all are, to be truthful. But that really kind of scares me. And I hope that our local government here would be as prudent as possible to get us through that. But what I really want to talk about today is, and I'm not particularly opposed to the $1,000 pay increase, or not opposed to it. I'm kind of in the middle. I don't know what's the right thing to go do, and my crystal ball to see what the future is is pretty well broken. But what I would ask is for us to, much like this hearing, I'd like to ask that local government look at everything and try to become, I'm going to say, a little bit more efficient. I want to pat Mr. Marz on the back for his management of sanitation, because I watched him manage that sanitation department for the last, gosh, 10, 12 years now. And he has done an excellent job. Thank you. And, you know, he got grants, and I can remember when I actually went up to that cog with him, we were trying to get grants for bailers and stuff, remember?
Yeah, but that's just, you know, that comes from all of us sitting up here, not just me. It comes from Mark, he's on the board, it comes from Brett, who's there all the time, and David. I mean, it's just not his, it's all these guys' loot. Anyway, so, you know, it's just not, it's this guy's loot.
I listened to the meeting where y'all went through all the budgets and everything, and found that money out of sanitation. So, I appreciate that. And I think that's partly due to some pretty good management on Mr. Marz's department. But I'd ask everybody, all the elected officials, that, you know, okay, we're giving this raise, but we need to look at maybe how we could be a little bit more efficient, you know? How do we deliver that extra $1,000 worth of value? And, you know, it's something that I want to point out, but something else, I've seen this, and I never really understood it. I've seen people in offices where they copy stuff, or, well, excuse me, they print it from their computer on the copier, and then they turn around and take that printed copy and scan it in as a PDF, so they can send it as an attachment to the eBay. Well, you see, I said Microsoft, I used to represent Microsoft. You own a product that can eliminate half of that effort. Microsoft has built-in drivers on Windows 10 and 11 that allow you to print directly to PDF. So, you don't have to print.
I think I should have run it on Microsoft 3 or something like that.
That's most plausible, Judge. But I'm just saying, I'd like to ask y'all and all public officials to stand up and look and see if you can actually deliver more value for the taxpayers. That's basically all I have to say, and I do appreciate y'all, and Judge, I appreciate your effort getting up there and calling this meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Mr. Deere?
Well, I don't have too much to say.
He must be under the weather, he must be sick, there.
No, I'm not sick. I have brought God, it's been acting up on me. I think it's commendable that the employees are getting $1,000. Not to be selfish, but commissioners, I already feel like that you're being overpaid, and you taking another $1,000 really isn't necessary. That's my feelings, that's my opinion. That's it.
I shortened it.
Thank you for your kind words.
I'll shorten it. Got a couple of commissioners elects. Anything I want to say?
Welcome sitting there, Judge. I appreciate you guys, and after having this.
This is yours.
Yeah, isn't that exciting? No, no, I could say that Dickie Drew and Richard Dogg, not a lot of stuff, occasionally called him one of you guys. And you guys are working hard. I do appreciate it. And if somebody's coming in, it just is more obvious how hard and what the job you guys have to do, and this budget stuff is not one for anybody. I mean, that is, yes. But something that Mr. McNally said, I think at the last meeting really struck a chord, and that is, we can't keep doing business as usual. You know, we've got to keep being innovative and looking forward, and there's so much stuff coming into Black County, and so many things are changing, that I'm excited to work with the commissioners that are up there, and the staff, and everybody, and I appreciate y'all reaching out, and enriching yourself, and, you know, working with, I know, Chris and myself coming in here. So, I do, I'm wanting, as I get deeper into it, and there's a lot more to go, I have a more appreciation for what you guys have done, all of you guys.
Thank you so much.
I second that.
All right. Thank you. Judge, so let's go back to the rates. If a public colleague questions, $20 a week, is that really going to break the bank of the taxpayer versus adding an employee? I'm giving you two variants here. My problem is, we're adding employees, we're, do we need them? It's not the $20 a week raise if we get the existing employee. It's keep adding, keep adding, keep adding. That's my problem with the budget. Okay?
I'm not having a problem with the employee.
That's what I say. But when you figure it out, it's $20 a week. A lot of people, that throws them in the next tax bracket, and they're not even getting taken hold of what they did last year. You know? But I know a lot of that's good.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public hearing?
I'd like to say one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you need to look more at the type of staff that you're getting, and the number of people that you're getting to do a job that previously was done by fewer people and very accurately. In other words, you keep growing the government when you should be reducing the government. It's ridiculous.
Thank you.
And that's where part of the money is going. Now, the $20, yeah, when you bring it down to that, I have to agree with you, Daddy, but I also have to say, that $20 buys somebody a half a tank of gas. Okay? And if the price of gas is the same time, we need to be looking after the staff, but we also need to be training them so that they can do what they should be doing, instead of perhaps wandering around and chicken chatting and everything else. And that's it. The last thing that I have to comment, the way that you put your salaries forward in the computer and elsewhere, and we're looking basically at the elected officials. You know, I don't know who you're trying to care, but I think you would make it a lot easier for everybody, instead of putting the position of the 2023, 2024 as one figure, and then it looks as though, oh, gosh, you're taking it each up for 24, 25, which is not the case. So, you should have another column in there, which gives the total amount of money that you're taking. It includes then your allowances and your longevity. Add it in, then you're not trying to trip the public into thinking, if you trip the public into thinking that you're taking less money home than you are. That's just my final comment.
That comes under that whole thing where Don Cornyn, as Attorney General, says, you know, misinformation or disinformation in a public notice is the same as no notice?
Well, I mean, you can put it all in one column, or you can break it down to where it's actually coming from. That's actually giving more information. So, it's almost damned if you do it there. It comes from different resources, and, you know, how much of it's insurance, and how much is travel.
We want it all, including the total.
We assume that y'all are able to add together.
Hey, assumption doesn't come into this, and the word assume breaks down as you mean. I'm not mad, don't treat me like one.
Anybody else have any comments in the public hearing? All right, I guess at this point, the public hearing is closed. Appreciate everybody's input. All right, out of number five, considerations, special, possible votes, put it up. Fiscal year 2024-2025. I often say we start with the proposed budget, and we work with numerous hearings. I was kind of working on whatever was printed out on September 17. There's a few things that I got handed, the version that got printed out on the 20th, which, like Marty said, she worked to 7:30, we got that. So, I actually saw this one this morning, but there was a few things that Rowan Bridge had changed. In this version that you printed out, I understand that y'all, there's a, y'all, here in the middle of the year, because of the flood, because of the hurricane, two disaster, we're in a must. There's, y'all, we're in the middle of the year, and we've got Miss Caroline, somebody twisted her arm, we got 37. Worked all the same stuff, and that's put in this year, it's practically, if I read it, if I understand what I'm hearing, though, that position is going to go over to precinct four, is that right? That's correct. We had five of that, I want that position in precinct four. That's what I was told, because I saw a new line item for $56,000. It's a new position in your budget. But that salary is still $56,000 in your budget. I do know, so that's how you intended it to go, or not?
We can stay like that. I mean, we can adjust it. It don't matter if it's not fit. If you need it, man, I could do it.
Thank you, Matt. That means he gonna have one guy taking $8,000 more than the rest of them. We understand why it's done, and glad you're safe to get her to do that.
We can adjust it.
Yeah, we have a problem. I didn't know, I'm not, I don't have a problem. I don't have, they don't. Show the resource, so to speak, going out there. Well, if I understood. I appreciate you for letting her do this stuff, letting Carolyn do stuff out of Rowan Bridge for all of us. I think she does some of the things, if you're wrong, but you do your own. She didn't have to do it all. So, on behalf of me, I would appreciate you for doing some of this stuff. In turn, we're going to call the decision, and we're going to enter her view in the upcoming year also, or you precinct. Or handout. Of course, precinct, we're kind of quiet here. I'll be hesitant, she probably will be. So, this one is refundable. Yeah, and you know, something it is, we've gone this refundable, some of them, administration calls for the person.
Only thing I ask, I won't be here, but if it is refundable, make sure my heart gets back in pristine form when it comes in. That's where I have a whole problem, really. That's where I have a problem with all of our money being grouped as one group. And I want to talk about that at the proper time today. I say, I want to talk about that at the proper time today.
So, are we changing that line up when you put the same on?
The line should go back to where we were in, that not plays the budget.
It'll go back to exactly what it should have been, with the $1,000 raise then.
God, I know that somehow, I think there's an uh-oh, and one of your senators got $2,000 as close to a $1,000. I think that's just a, that's a tie. That's the top.
I don't have it online. I have it in, um, on board.
Uh... Man, you do look...
The admin assistant on precinct four?
Yeah. So which one are you looking at? This last one, thirty-six, six forty-three, and...
This one you're looking at?
The inline, the title is eight, six forty.
The one I have is updated on nine twenty-four, so I'm...
It says nine twenty-four. Is this the last one, or not, it's one, is it?
So as a law, you're first line, that one position, I go back. Original four.
I'll go the other way. So that, that position will be dead now. Before, no employee in that position. Carolina is moving to four, working three, either that was... Or go back to, uh, being...
Four, two, yes.
So what was that original salary, do you know?
It'll be the same as the, as the, uh...
Employee one.
The employee one. It'll be the same salary as employee one.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, that's going to be due here in two minutes. Yes, sir.
But as far as secretary, the one I have that we're doing payroll, I think it's not...
We must have an O, because this says nine twenty and nine seventeen, both of them say forty-eight as opposed to... Is this the top of the budget? Or is that...
I was just making sure that one I have isn't right. It's, this is the salary, one that we go off of. It's separate from... Oh, your salary sheet, yes, that's a different, that's a different sheet. Correct. Yes, that's correct. I have it in here, I didn't change it. So, I pressed it on the salary sheet.
So we're going to reduce it to forty-eight, one nine one?
What?
It's going to be reduced to forty-eight, four, six, and seven.
But with the thousand dollar raise, it goes back up to forty-nine, that's exactly.
Right. No. It'll be, should have been that line. Nine, O, eight. That's the line, sure. Employee on the three. All right, we go back. So it's forty-eight, nine, ten with the raise or not?
No, forty-nine is with raise. Forty-nine, nine, ten.
So we need to move to forty-nine, nine, ten, and O six. And the balance last...
Forty-nine, nine, ten, seven.
That, the balance, uh, needs to go back in the Rose Vikings, three fifty-four.
Forty-nine, nine, ten.
Seventy.
Forty-nine, nine, ten?
Seventy, yes. Forty-nine, nine, ten, seventy.
Forty-nine, nine, ten, ten, seventy?
Yes, sir.
Two, six.
So look, this line, the previous shares, the same as this one, these are different. But this one is the same.
Chief, get rid of my... Eight, nine, nine, ten, seven. And of course, that's going to change as a matter of fact.
That's going to change all of this benefit.
Period, then.
Yes, a little bit.
Should be enough in that.
That changes, but all go back to the right of the table. Right?
Right.
But there's nothing so scary and, and unemployment, all like that, so already just put the remaining back into three fifty-four, Rose Vikings. Oh.
Anything else we can do on your, on your... I don't know, Judge, you look pretty, you know, looking all... Not, not as far as I'm concerned, okay? Well, I got a question for you. Great. Uh, I understand, have you looked at the proposed, uh, legislation for this part of the legislature, you know, where you had those...
You're talking about the salary people?
Yeah.
So, yeah, um, from what we, from our understanding of it, in order for them to qualify, they'll take enough money, so we would have to bring them up here or bring them back to our salary.
Well, that, that's, that, we have some O's in here, too. The next first year would be... Would you look, would this propose best salary, those proposed numbers, right?
It, it's still coming up.
So what, we had five?
Um, we have...
Two in jail, one in nine one one.
One in maintenance.
One in maintenance. Who's in jail, what are they in jail for?
And one in, uh, emergency manager.
Is that what it is, yeah?
Uh, we have nine-one-one permit, OEM, um, DP's position, um, two in the jail. Uh, two in, uh, the sheriff's department side.
One dispatch, one...
At the fire, the fire marshal doesn't, has never met that criteria.
Yes, that's part of the...
Correct, but it was a salary. You cannot have a part-time position in salary.
We just had one for twenty years, so that's, uh...
They changed the rules on that.
Changed the rules.
It's the immediate situation with that. My... It probably wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't six digits or what?
Looking at the prediction. Good job from Ireland.
We had it in the office, I don't have time for that. I, I don't, this question gives me out about it, it's an outside point for me, because we have everything.
So my question is, when all these people went to a salary, where did all their comp time, their, all that, where did all that?
Well, when they, when they went to salary...
You don't get it anymore?
No, no, two or two.
They got paid out.
So when...
Their sick time, all that, I don't think so.
The majority of the people that went to salary, in fact, all of them except for one, which would be part-time, so it's parting salary. They got a significant raise that would meet the criteria of salary. At that point in time, they comp...
I'm sorry, I don't remember giving anybody those specific raises.
They did. They did. I have it, I can give to you, give you just a minute, I'm happy to hear it. Um, they got a significant raise, they were paid out their comp, you're here.
But thank you.
So you said fire marshal, they wanted to salary, what about, anything out there?
Yeah.
But it blew through that. Because the guy who knows they're off, they take off, you know, burner.
Dale, Dale was hourly.
He was hourly, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Technically, so, but anyway, so we just need to know that everybody, plus the fire marshal, that's hourly.
But to answer your question, they did get paid out their comp, they hadn't even built up. They got paid out their vacation that they hadn't even built up. They got paid out any holiday that they had built up. The only thing that they did not get paid out was sick, and that's because of our policy. You did not get that. But when they did go to salary, at that point in time, they still were able to take time off due to sick or whatever, so they weren't denied the time off here in that time. And most of them took time for each one.
Well, it started, the impetus for all that was, in the sheriff's office, we had, since the first month I ever did, now, hey, comp time is very difficult to manage in office. I mean, you're out there working the scene of murder or something, you can't just leave, oh, I gotta go with my clock, you know, you gotta keep doing the job. It's easier to accuse like that, so we were trying to, trying to hold back on some of the comp time, make it salary, then they can take off when necessary. And kind of let it run to support the parks. So if we could, if we could put it back on, on the regular.
So what we did is...
I'll do that first, October, they go back to regular.
Yeah, we just took them out, they made, turned it into, to hourly, they, they didn't get a decrease or a increase. We took that time, turned it back to hourly, and then gave them the thousand dollar raise from there.
Right.
And yes, they would have to start all over on their comp, their vacations and whatnot, but the majority of them took time off while they're on salary, so it's not like they were denied that.
Yeah. We need to, I guess, the next meeting we have at the start of the year, we can change everything. Change it back to, to hourly.
Yes.
We're making a motion, we're going to change it today.
For the book.
True.
Of all of these things that have been changed in the budget, that's to propose, has got to be alluded to today.
Yeah. Only have every bunch of it, too.
Um, yeah.
So to be clear, that's seven, the seven, ten parties, plus the fire marshal needs to go hourly. Take care of all of those, plus the fire.
So the position that needs to go for, the position that needs to go from salary to hourly is maintenance, chief deputy.
What?
Maintenance, chief deputy, dispatch supervisor, jail captain, lieutenant, jail cap, or lieutenant from the jail, and OEM, nine-one-one permit, and fire marshal.
It's seven, plus the salary.
Only left the officials to agree.
God, you don't like y'all?
I can do a neighborhood ten thousand.
Oh, the, I'm sorry, the lieutenant for, um, the sheriff's office is also salary.
I sent you a note three weeks ago.
So there's lieutenant one and lieutenant two.
We got a possible, if anybody else needs one.
Well, we were running further, and I stole one from Mr. Deeger. Thank you.
No, we have two in the sheriff's department, one is for, um...
Should I state? You have one in this factory, you have a few in the sheriff's department, too.
So we have maintenance, we have lieutenant one with the sheriff's department, lieutenant two with the sheriff's department, the chief deputy, dispatch supervisor, jail captain, jail lieutenant, nine-one-one permits, OEM, and fire marshal.
There's ten.
Yes.
So you got, you just said jail lieutenant.
Yeah.
So you have a jail lieutenant, you have lieutenant, two lieutenants.
So we got three lieutenants, total. One in the jail, one and two in the chair.
Ready to, y'all, sir?
Yes.
Yes, you have a...
So she has a fellow, who's in, so care...
Ten.
Just all the way, you can go to hour.
Yes, sir.
Does she want this to reset? This next week will cause only three land use. We increased our projection of revenue from sale of land to thirty thousand, two ninety-eight. Speaking of that, where did you, did you take the title for the... That's why I went back, because we are running the face of root. They didn't take that one.
It is the moment. I told him he'd hope, he has questions. I'll, I'll get over to that, so...
Yeah, I went back, I got back to therapy. I had, I had talked to him, thinking, I'm saying he didn't try to go.
Good name, Mr. Butler. I don't understand my feelings.
Yeah, I probably regret the talking this day.
I'll tell him to do a call like that.
He, he know, he might get it.
My, my hands will not do it.
I'm getting to it.
You're getting to it.
Yeah. This thing is...
So when we did the balance, the fire marshal, we can, we become hourly, um, to stay where he's at, it would be eleven hours a week.
This morning probably worked.
So how much did it take?
It's been a long time of years.
Yeah.
I mean, when it's fire season, he, he, he busy, 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 busy.
Well, Christmas time, you have a lot of fires.
He does a lot of inspections and things, and...
Yeah.
He's always miles on that big truck, seeing what you're working.
All them new, uh, spurs and stuff, he has to do a fire inspection for them.
Yeah.
Lots of inspections, too. It's just taking out and that. Yes, and we wouldn't be able to ask if he'd get, get up on them, uh, reports and whatnot.
How's that going?
Well, looking at your report, I'll see that.
If you take in childcare, sleep down in the back seat.
So...
I said, I mean, you take off, and child sleeps down in the back of the motor scratch.
You deduct that, but... Well, you've got jail, you've got trace and working text here. Sometimes it takes much more. I said I submitted, I submitted two today, so you're in the back. You're in the back.
What did you submit today?
Just, uh, I'm not...
Yeah. Yeah, what's right here. I said, they, they. Yeah. Good for it, Rose. Getting out, hiding. Where we get it. That's about four years out here, you know? For the dead guy. So where's, where's the other case?
Did we make another, uh, where are we showing all the money coming out of that six roof? Okay.
Where is it? It's in that same line in the, uh, under the sheriff's budget, well, actually no, it's another line.
It would be out of his budget.
Not in this budget, four oh.
Four oh nine.
Four oh.
Yeah, okay, I missed. This, this one that I saw this morning. Yeah, there it is, one of them says jail roof, four hundred sixty thousand, eight hundred fifty-two dollars, sixty-eight cents. So he just brought that up, we've got the bill. It'll be paid out this year. Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred and seven thousand dollars.
No, they'll pay it out this year. Well, I mean technically it's coming this, it's coming this year. Yeah. The whole bill is put into this budget as well, sir. That's why I'm telling you, what is today, we're talking about a heat, time we vote again to pay a bill, go out all the others. We got, officers up in here, whatever day something bill, that's it, where you gonna pay it from? Listen, we've sat here and balled bull dozers and, and what do you call them things, scoop out inches, we've balled them and said, I ain't paying no one until next year or longer, so I know what we've done, I've been sitting right here beside them. And it's buzzing. Think about right. So what you gonna do, volunteer?
I will talk to you.
Contractors, if you can change some things like I requested the other day. I don't care long, there's enough seagulls here. We're all right, he's down here, and we will pay that on the third, whichever it comes out this year or next year, we're gonna bring it on the third or the summer. This money is not gonna make any difference when we put that thing. Then the day today on it for the first. I get that. So we didn't clear that up, is all I'm saying.
We started clearing it up.
Clear it up.
But now it's clear, it's like I cleared it.
Go ahead and bring it up to speed.
No, no, I, I think we're going to.
I know you got a point, I'm just missing it somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate you having the, the gavel.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I was asked to play, that's why I did. And then I was watching David, they get out of town, break. I thought we were gonna be done with our budget, I didn't know we were gonna stay close to doing these public hearings. Airplane tickets had already been bought. Somewhere in here, we also had a, I think we had almost a hundred thousand covered, someone kept a murder, a five killer case. That ain't gonna be the end of the hill on that, but hopefully that'll cover them through, through this year. That thing would be costing us for a few years, the way those things are dragging on. Your bill. Put it up here now, sir. Uh, where is that?
Four ten.
Well, it can go all the way.
Four ten.
That's why I thought they got two of them.
Depending on how sharp the lawyer is, then you can exhaust your state of bills and then you can, I guess you could try, but still, federal, you spring a court. Not too many of them get up all the way to the air. Cut the ground if you do.
I told you that, travel. Uh, yes, it's. And I think it's because they, something was better, I told you, I told you that, travel. That orange car for a sheriff's department. He told me that, uh, the cars are fifty-one, six thousand eight thousand seven hundred. That's really seven.
So what's a contingency?
There's nothing. Nothing can found out, it's nothing for.
Contingencies all over that roof, but we're. Next year, I guarantee you, next year, we're gonna be putting another roof on the chest, so we'll have, I'll have a decent contingency. I might be able to buy a bunch of cars for the sheriff's.
That was the least. That's the least.
Still providing them lately, late model cars, that's a lesson value.
They were not patrol cars, they were detective trucks. They were not rigged up ready to go, they were just trucks, that's a sex abuse.
She's changing that right now, yes. She's, she's getting, how many copies did you get?
She's, she's getting four more copies.
She's getting four more copies of this. The numbers are the same, but it's, it's hard to pick them out like we, it's not what our eyes are used to.
I listed to you the X, Excel.
I like this one, I don't you dare.
Yeah.
The grease, the grease.
Yeah, I haven't even seen that one. If you see someone.
I like that one, I noticed it. I like this one.
She's pretty.
I know, but I like, I like this one. All the changes we made.
Recycle that.
I got a lot of recycle.
Sure, earn, earn our keep. Right, that's what you want to do?
Yeah. Definitely.
So. It's gotta be working, we just spent twenty-eight thousand on the presser, I know it's gotta be working.
Let's hope you're getting it back. Whatever it was, I wish you had a day to get to jail, sir. They do hear this Friday?
Thursday, Friday. I rode by there yesterday and I, I'm not, the street's not far enough back to really, I'm pulling the trailer, so I really couldn't tell for all we got.
I got, I got the back shot, didn't I?
So now what they have, the first section is open, there's a park, there's a, it's, uh, it's, they're standing scene. And then they went to this side, the place dish, listen, a satellite dish is still sit down, that's on that, so this is on coming. Okay. It's starting on this end to come back. Yeah. Because he's got a running machine to cut the standing scene off. And he wanted to make sure that as we cut it on your running machine, it do both sides of the standing scene, which is in the middle. So he worked this section, he worked this section, it should be done for somebody that's slid in. And I talked to BP. I sent you all a picture from my office over there, and I thought when I was taking the picture of it, it had tannins, it was off. That must have been on this end, because he wouldn't have took it off and put it back down. No, they did, they took it, they took it off to fix the render, and we'll put it back on when those have gone away. But yes, and they had to build those, those roof curves, they had to refire it for those also. Yeah, that's why we had. He gets me some pictures and. The actual trucks has made out a seat for them on that western porch, porch, and it's a sag, it was sagging about inch and a half. So they dress us out of seat for them, they actually, they actually put a brace on them.
Get back. But, uh, I have a call two thousand, those are, so far, trash. Yeah, installation tracks for the following.
So Sheriff Allen, is there anything you want to say to put for the new sheriff position?
We went over, I think this will be what, what I'm gonna do.
Now, are you still on the animal control?
Yes.
So we, so we still have it in there for the, uh?
Well, we have retrieved it from the constable, he picked it out, he picked his side and changed it.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't know whether to put it.
Side will change to sheriff's office.
Well, no.
Because we did, we talked about, of course, that time, he's one thousand years of style and the handle. It goes over sheriff's department, if it runs the sheriff's department, what happened was less than an hour of the project will only be there on October's, January one, then it goes away completely.
Right.
Because the government wanted, so no reach of style.
Right. Stop and go with that.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna look at it, it's good.
It took out very simple, but it did, it worked a few times. That's right, that's three floors of it.
So what you're saying is the stipend will go away once he.
He worked.
He can continue doing the job till January one, he can get the staff at this hospital, after January one, he's gonna go away.
He left in for the last three months of the year and then he's going away.
So he will vacate.
We got a thing on that, we're not gonna have it, just to get the same check, the budget year. He's gonna get a bigger check for three months, he's gonna get the same check as you, with the new guy, his check will be.
Right, it will stop.
Yeah. He didn't want that.
Right. So the sheriff's department also will not get a stipend, those taken away purchases.
If we have a, if we have a sheriff, you're gonna see that one too, what, how many deputies we're calling now. We, we had the danglot out there and get some, do the.
That's not, there's still a way in the process.
And that's the first one ever. So you, you give it that, and then you couple of years and that too. I don't think that's exactly what I want. That's a fashion. Appreciate it.
It was built that old sand foundation. It was done that way, it was on foundation. That. I come in my office, I'm not doing that. Is that true?
And that's not often you tell them that's the long term. He did it for you.
I know, but when he got elected again.
I never had a chance to take it up though.
Now, when he, when he came in office, he said he's gonna do a sand foundation.
You were doing it.
No.
No, he started damn three or two.
Now just like the.
When, when was that? You talking about which time it's.
Fourteen years ago.
I guess when he beat Bush, right?
Yeah.
How he doing three things. But you were already doing it.
No.
You were. What's that, what's that? But I switched it, and I don't, I don't know.
I just said a comment. I made a comment, I just made a comment, it hasn't done.
It may have, I didn't remember.
But there are a lot, a lot of highlights to that.
Your honor, can I make a comment on the satellite dish?
What?
Uh, that you asked about, the satellite dish belongs to DPS.
It belongs to, and it, it's gone, they've already been contacted, DPS, it's the T L A S system. Everybody else in the world is connected up to the internet, that dish is thirty-eight years old, it's got a mobile dialer. There's both, we're waiting on them to come down, disconnect it, run cable outs to the internet, everybody else in the world is on the internet, this, that thing running off. It ain't going up on a half hand dialer.
Now DPS enable, has the ability.
DPS reports, T L A S, or whatever you do with T L A S, checking on people's records, though, thanks.
Yeah, DPS do it, you get involved, he's involved trying to get it moving.
Cause I called DPS, I talked to the fellow in Loveken, and he said, he referred, I said, well, have a talk to maintenance director, uh, of T L A S people, and they did.
Speaking of that, I asked over you, sure, will you call the jail permission and tell them that they need to come to the jail? And have BP, and have BT, BT there for call. The last time they come here, BP says all he gets is a, he says, she said, and he would like to do a walk through with the other person.
They got to the recertify, but he wants to do it before it's reopened, that way to be ready to go. I was holding off until he got, the big thing, they had a problem with, I think more than anything, was the electric, that's what freaked them out, no electricity. And all them guys, it's pitch black inside there, last time you ever in there, what, got to the jail, wasn't it dark in there?
No, but I was, I was.
I called him on that Friday, I hadn't heard that.
Yeah, because, you know, he said, we've said.
Oh, I get it.
So they're telling him this is wrong, and he said he's fixed it, and that is the only thing, just. Eliminate that.
To recertify, they have to come in and, and walk through everything, they'll, they'll, they'll throw the breakers on them and see what happens when, when the lights are off and how long it takes. That's part of their, sometimes their inspection though, so.
I don't think they're gonna be into that December, next month. Turn those switches. That's what I'm hearing.
But that's automatic. That's automatic.
Uh, that's what I'm saying, you can still manually do it.
Yeah, yeah. Whether anybody's been trained to manually do it, it's.
I know it's real hard to pull that.
I think everybody over ought to know how to slip the breaker.
That's a little.
Yeah, yeah, whoever it is. Don't send me in there, I don't pretend to know which one of you ever. Don't send me in there, I pretend to know which one of you lovers. But then I'm over my shop. Yeah. But yes, sir, good sir, get in touch with us.
I love that.
I wanna have some, waiting to have something, some good news to report back to them.
You got a motive for sheriff. You don't type that down. A motive?
What?
Two again. A couple of weeks ago, man. These people know, yeah, there's a satellite dish, they got, they, satellite on the roof. They said that we should go up, without the satellite, and hold it. Anybody who can talk about these sets? I don't know much about that, but they're, I don't know who they talk to, they're off. I do know them. What is the government for sanitation?
Zero three seven.
Actually, I don't.
Zero zero three seven.
What is it?
Sanitation.
Two eight one five nine three nine eight one seven.
Yeah, alright.
That's a very bad back here, way there. One oh nine. They're one oh nine.
But those, those pages aren't, you have the Excel version, it's not, you got the numbers on it.
Way back in the back. Second. I don't know, I have those, I had, I did a lot of five and two, so she pulled it down to me. I looked at this whole truck, like ten, fifteen minutes ago. It's in a very bad. It's in a very bad condition, almost ridiculous. As far as can we borrow it from again? She showed you what we have for her.
Sanitation's been around forever, though. I had to get to the back of the.
I don't know if that's where this is at. March first, even more difficult. Sanitation, right back.
What's this?
I don't know. Yeah, right there, Chris, way in back.
Get close.
So it's a way in there.
Very good, thank you.
What do you think about that?
So far, it's great, and I just wanna say this truth.
It isn't bad.
Well, that's it, alright, that's all that's about it either. You know, just peeing in it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna pee. Hey, I've had that beer all that time. Hey, March fifth, we collect your diet, Jerry.
I got one of them.
Did you?
Yeah, I got it. Most people put their bottle in, that's where I go. So where you looking at sanitation for? There, there is, there is an issue in there, and I don't have a real big issue with it. And after life, life out there part-time. And we said we want to leave the health insurance program in there, in case we had to hire somebody full-time, but it's really hard for somebody full-time to do that, it's trash. Uh, and it's within their life, there's third dollar in here this year, but I mean, that's twenty thousand dollars. It's one of the, like, big issues out there today. Well, considering the way we, we scout, they're trying to make raises out of that. The good news is, if this, we. Once we get this jail situation behind us, we'll be in better shape to do more. I just hope everybody's renting from us. I'm afraid some of them counties, they're trying to get it on the board, I talked to them. I talked to the judge, and the rest of them counties, they have to go scramble and find other accommodations, and I'm not sure.
I think they do.
Or we, we hope so.
I think they do.
So what do you think about the sanitation? Nothing, I, I just.
What's on a part-time, we're gonna get a good part-time to run.
Yeah, that was a big question.
I've been forced to go down that road.
I think you all get it on those.
I mean, all the people that are really part-time for sanitation.
Yeah.
And he talks about some.
He talks about.
Well, the fire marshal's experience is he works, he's part-time, he uh, cause sometimes they get overlooked part-time does, and they don't, they don't see a raise for, for somebody. We thought we'd uncover everybody, and we didn't. Many part-timers do we have in town?
I've got ten, March fifth.
Well, I got very, I want to go through.
I got, I got.
They had, it was basically into the part-time.
No.
Okay, I got two part-timers. Yeah, I mean, you know, it's easy to do it, because you can just take, you know, talk about a cloud, take a little out of the material or something, but.
That's right.
Everybody else, they got no sanitation. I've got a part-time.
Yes, I do too.
And uh, sanitation.
That's all I want.
Two sanitation workers, and I've got two part-time, they have eighty.
I think that is got two, Mark's got two, David's got.
They don't have any.
Just wanna say you got two part-timers.
They have one. So.
Two, two. Three, I got two. Seven, there's seven sanitation part-time. That's what it is.
What about the general public, and the rest of the general public?
I don't know, it's the fire marshal. That's fire marshal.
Okay.
Uh.
You're the contractor, that was above.
The general SA. You got any?
Yeah, they're in my records.
Okay.
Right, okay, wait on point, let. I don't think it's a day you can figure out. Alright, so I want to, your, your funds are funded by. Where you go see, that's two, that's two. Only you can afford to give a raise, and just to have it. So, so a thousand has fifty cents, right?
Two part-time.
Yes. So I tell you, Eastex about the satellite on the roof. Yeah, cause I was another person that worked on a boat from Eastex, and so we don't, Eastex does not do. It's quality, so not, whoever has the cable.
Mark, you said that.
Quality.
It's their service.
Yes, and that's what they're waiting for, somebody from quality, to get in the motor, to hook it up.
That way.
Landes, Landes don't.
DPS.
That would be the sheriff's.
I'll get on top of that, I just. I just thought of Eastex, I'm gonna go through it. We don't have service.
I didn't, I didn't realize, they, they got a different internet provider.
One, which is.
That's all.
It's a new number two. Do you have that in? What kind of air and service the jail uses for the shit? I think it's just for that T-Lex system, it's kinda like uh. The old system. They don't have a separate internet for Eastex? I just don't, they said, we don't supply any of that to the jail.
Oh, sure.
Well, that's been a state contract, that I'd have had a finger in that process.
Well, whoever can, he's on, he's there, he's gonna pay you, he has an email address, and he's gonna reach there, and he's got your, your uh. T-Lex. This is the T-Lex system, that's what that satellite dish, you gotta fix it. Don't get out there.
We'll, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Is that, did, did, come out the dig dish up there?
I need a thanks card, you know, also. So the problem is, they're waiting on a motor, to connect it to online, so you can sell it. They said, I will wait on the phone company to turn it to my, which I thought was Eastex. So I called Eastex, and they said, no, we don't provide service to the general chief.
Well, you have to go over there when it is, find out who the handler is.
I don't think you have to go up there, they are terrible, they don't tell you who's paying for that service.
Well, I don't think you can.
DPS pays for T-Lex.
Because true, I, I believe it goes through the uh, DPS, yes. Because they have to use their service in order to do those searches.
So it's, you got, I got it down, now it's working, you have to lay it on the roof. I don't want to fall off, or it's gonna. What happened to you going to contact whoever, but I called, they said they contacted you about diverting the T-Lex from the cave, from the antenna, that you're running into the internet?
That's what Jane was probably taking care of, she said they thought a modem, wrong modem there. Eastex telephone wouldn't accept that, so they, you know.
But when Mark called somebody, and they said, Eastex ain't who provides the internet to the city. Whoever the cable company provided this year. So, but, but why can't we just contract with, with the phone company and tell them, come hook us some of that up, we gotta get this thing going?
How many people use satellite?
It's all bits, Eastex.
That's two persons that's outside of work with our unit.
Not, not, I'm at the jail, it's what he's been, so. Phone companies, because, listen, it don't matter who, we just, we can get Eastex to provide it, that maybe more than anything, it'll be self, too. Well, I know it's not good, isn't it? It might be what's not being done.
She told me twice, that Eastex is back here.
So the lady's taken care of, talked about cases for a week, doesn't she?
Yes, she's on some kind of making or something.
Right, yeah. What, what lady are you talking to?
Jane Cooksey.
Jane Cooksey with.
She's over the dispatch.
She don't pay the satellite bill, though.
I'm wondering if it's, if it's not satellite, or you got satellite going here, over the election, and that makes it something.
I have satellite, sure. Uh. And we cancel them under innovation. So quality service. Quality service, IT people, they don't provide it.
That's why I keep wanting to allow them to do that part of it, because they, they, they have.
But in the meantime, we just look, go out and do a test, and take, and put it on the ground. Work, go out and help, someone to help.
There's no hunger, or satellite.
Well, they call it something else, somebody's doing it, uh, you may not be called satellite, I forget who.
Ottoman.
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 Yeah.
And so, were you in any of that?
Yeah, that Ottoman was.
At the jail?
But I don't think they have Ottoman, I think they have uh.
That's what I was trying to clarify, your honor.
Figure that out, but what else we got to do on this budget? It's time to get this road.
I thought, what we gonna do if that's a part-time? Part. What we gonna do if that's a part-time? I can't hear you.
I say DPS, that's what they're operating.
So, we have thirty-six part-time people, that is, including one part-time person that is in jail, they're in a full-time position, but they're all working part-time.
We don't pay anybody, and that's not like, we don't have a part-time position in the jail.
There's not one in the budget anywhere, I think.
Correct, but we have a person in a full-time position that works part-time hours.
Well, I'm saying, that's the bosses. Yes, we don't have that.
He's the law.
I think you take a full-time.
And full-time, and full-time is getting a forty-eight cents raise.
That's wonderful, he's going to. And he's going to the academy and working part-time. I can't get the.
I didn't get one, huh?
That's.
That's all I don't need, he can watch over here in the dark.
It's the same one, God, it's the same, punctuality, that one, first of notes, your places.
It's an O, it's an O, it's the same one, God, that's the difference, that's the O to a verb, that's good. It's a good one. You gotta figure that out, reading is.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a key up there. I look at me and Mark, sure. I don't care. For sure.
That's all I know. Is there a thing, Jane?
No, it's the same thing, it's just a different format.
Different format. That is a rare word. I had somebody tell me that. What is all this? Okay, wait till later, we're gonna, we're gonna give the part-time, uh, make sense now, right? Alright, let's take it.
So, what, you're, you're, if you're breaking down your full-time employee, it's forty-eight cents an hour, just remember that.
Well, we just don't, we want fifty, fifty cents.
Okay, so that's the per.
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents.
So there have been squares part-time and missing, so.
And you're talking about each employee, not the line item?
Well, about any part-time, every full-part-time person.
Okay.
So a lot, they're all part-time.
Okay, I was just, the previous year, just hit just a lot item, and we decided what they're.
What does that convert into money? Fifty cents an hour? What's the total of money?
That's a thousand.
They don't have to say work, they're good.
Yeah.
What they have on the budget, that's all I'm trying to say, where are you gonna get the money? I got a pin.
So, more than you go by the line item, and then y'all decide the raise in it, this time that's why I was asking.
Well, I guess we changed it.
I'm gonna, with all due respect, I'm gonna, where the money's coming from.
That's why I'm saying I can't give you an answer.
Sir, if you're part-time, thirty-nine hours.
Forty-nine hours.
So it would be fifty cents for twenty-nine hours.
Well, that's where the, unless you're a fire marshal, and that's less.
Well, just don't be, just don't be a salary.
Okay.
So what? So what was it, cause I didn't get any of that.
Fifty cents an hour, you haven't determined where, where the funding coming from, I guess is your point.
That's the biggest question.
I think we're gonna have to do some homework, probably. You ready to do some homework?
We can find them out.
Yeah, no, I guess there, it's, I guess there. I just said we're gonna produce, do our homework and finish this stuff.
All we need to know is how much money it is.
Um, how many?
She's working on that.
Okay, working on that.
She's saving it up?
You guys are the fellows, I'm all for it, but, 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 did y'all know where the money's coming from? So, yeah, so let me ask this question, are we talking about? We, we just finished a part-time delay for this budget, we give single ladies a deal. Who can we get a raise to? Who's the mortgage for that? Would they have a raise in the budget, they wouldn't get two raises. That's. We used to know.
They've already got a raise, they're not getting enough.
Well, we're gonna figure that out. Yeah, put that in motion. We'll figure it out.
Somebody's trying to figure out how much it is. How much it is.
Thirty thousand.
I have it. All.
I have a raise, which, which, which.
She said it's, it's forty, but now she says sixty-four.
But she's in three, so she has three again.
So they got more than yourself, that's what they're.
They got two points.
Mark, thank you for the kudos, right? Thank you for that. Thank you.
Alright, so I did, uh, twenty-nine hours, we did four years, that's fifty-eight hours each payroll. Uh, at the end of the year, that's fifteen oh eight hours, and then I times that by fifty cents, and I have seven hundred and fifty-four dollars per year. That's what I got.
So, Mr. Paul.
That was about right.
I want to add in the whole.
Uh, uh, we would need to do at times, uh.
Twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, twenty-four, one twenty-eight.
Like you were pressing it all.
That's what we ever paid.
We took out. That doesn't count, that doesn't count the social security and, uh, Medicare.
Get that, we can, we can, we can add it to that.
I just say, we. We make sure it's all clear.
What is your most? Commission?
I got, I got fifty cents.
We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, we're.
So, so let me ask you something. Well, we give it, if they've already got a raise, but how do we justify a judge giving more than two hundred and forty cent amount of raise first to fifty?
Well, I'm gonna tell you what's happening. We did a raise and did this last year to those, those people. So when they come and ask for, to get a raise after what they lost this year, it'll happen in the next year. They'll be asking for another raise, because they're not getting fifty cents.
We're talking about seven thousand?
I don't know what's going on.
Seven, three, but he don't.
So we're bringing them down to the fifty cent raise, or are we keeping them at the two dollars?
No, 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 let's not get the rest, I bought it, I put in, I got my rear-end chute, all day long, I bet, no more raise, I ain't got nothing left.
They can't, they're not getting additional fifty cents.
I'm not opposed to that.
But what I was asking, are we bringing them down to the fifty cent, or are we keeping them at the two dollars?
They're just like, they're laying right where they are, it's like getting additional fifty cents.
Right, that's right. I don't, I don't understand how you did that. Just because you, you choose as a boss or a officer over a department to pay two or three people versus one full-time, that's your prerogative? But when we go to the raises, we need to make a new plan for everybody, Judge.
You're wrong, tell me, that's not what we, I thought we already decided on.
No, you decided.
No, I didn't decide, I just put it in a version of a budget.
You put it in first.
I should, it's a proposal.
If we're talking about changes.
You're talking about.
I am talking about it, so let's be fair to everybody.
So, the reason that they asked for a raise, they didn't ask for a raise this year and last year, because they didn't give the phone that they didn't want. So it's gonna be the same money again next year.
They got the, they got a raise last year, which is what he wants.
Yeah, no, it wasn't, it wasn't the original fifty cent or whatever you were writing, it was what he asked for, just like we did this year. They asked for it, they got a raise, and if you did like, you can raise, this is where you gave the part-time. So I'm just telling you, that's, that's, that's the cycle of it. He had the part-time raise issued, we gave, we gave him a part-time already, the rest is going to be part-time, and then they go back next year. That's how it's, the cycle of it.
Yeah. Right.
Hey, Jim, we probably oughtn't just put him a full-time person, all the benefits, all the social security, also county an extra seventeen thousand, but, you know. That's why it's, it's a unique situation. So he's been saving the county seventeen thousand a year, twenty years that I've been there, but let's kick him in the teeth.
I'm not trying to kick him in the teeth, I know you're not, Reeves, I know you're not. Well, it's, it's a year lag. Okay, let's move on with the next project. So that's, just leave their fifty cents to all part-time now.
Not six, ain't three.
Six, ain't three, six, three. Jake, do you see a power, you know?
That's right, I ain't trying to go with this. Roughly twenty-seven. We'll figure it out. I know Marty's arguing them, that's a good, that's a good.
What's next?
Miss Ainsworth, next week's one.
Okay, why are you upset, Judge?
I am upset.
Why are you upset, I must have something else added to that.
It's your last rodeo, so.
Well, like I said the other day, you weren't here. I'm trying to clear up some stuff for the next commissioner's coming in. Year four, I've been in here all these years, and I've asked about this. On, on the general fund, we've got a, the interest that was collected this year was a hundred and seven thousand. Now, our money is all gone together for the last four years, according to the outside auditor. I've had over a million dollars in the fund balance that's drawing interest. The other commissioners that got money drawing interest, that you complained about our high fund balance. And I wanna, I wanna separate that. The outside auditor plus tax auditor said, that does not need to be commingled with general funds.
They told me you don't get out there and put some of that money into the roads, and you won't be sitting up there drawing interest. If you want to manage access to have the roads fixed, and you, you borrow that million dollars, I don't dispute that. But I hope we had a little change there, and you got plenty of road you can spend that on. Real close, I guess. And you do a fine job, and the more you do.
Well, I wanna see that separated, I want to afford to separate, everybody's got a fund balance, and we need our money. Our money cannot be spent for anything else but growing rich legally anyway. Am I correct?
You don't get to spend it all if you don't fix more roads. And you sit up there drawing interest, that, that's not what the people.
Okay, let me ask you another question directly. Have I been getting my interest on my money these past four years, eight years?
I haven't researched it, but I don't know.
Well, I know I have. So I want to see that change. And I, and it may not change, you, you know. But I'm just saying, I would like to see that change. Why would the taxpayer be out here, and I've got a million dollars and could be making me fifty thousand a year? And it's all going in general funds? That's not quite right, is it? You told me much before that any money that I had coming from the PDo's and all like that, we always get that money.
Sure.
Okay, what about the interest? Should we get that?
As neither, they don't grow your interest over interest.
I, I.
That's an unfair proposition, but.
I, I didn't talk to, to the, to the, uh, secretary, the president.
Up until the last year or two, it wasn't, it was paying a quarter of a percent.
Well, well, let me, let me say this. I would hope, I'm not gonna be here, but I would certainly hope that we look at it, we look at our banking investments after the first year a little bit unfair. Sure, and, and, because we're paying, we're getting paid point four five from people state bank right now on all our borrowed money, which that's part of our fund.
My four, point oh four five.
Point four five.
That's forty-five percent.
My point is less than a half a percent.
Okay, well.
And point four five is forty-five percent, that's, I'm gonna go throw everything I got if you give it point four five.
Point oh four five, baby.
Well, point four five is, I said, it's, it's less than a half a percent, is what I'm saying. And I think we can do better than that.
I believe, I agree.
Well.
I got two banks, it will, well.
Well, we did our, our bank, um, bids, and went out the bids, we, we went out for everyone in the county. And the, people state bank did have the highest rate, well, chosen them, in fact, at one point in time, they were second with the other ones, and then they gave back, and said they were giving them higher, which is where we got that percentage from. The reason we do our bank bids, for the different banks in the county, because those are the ones that we have to go to their bank every day, bring money, and do all that work, so that's why we did our bids for one.
But it's not, it's not like they'll make money off of this bass and the other taxpayers out here. If we can get more money by going to New Orleans or Huntsville.
Well, she can, she can, the most our contract states, that she, she can bank with any, bank in the county, or any bank that surrounds.
I try to.
She can, she can, she's, she's. She's invested Texaco right there, four and a half, five percent, right? So all you need to do, you, we have a best, I mentioned CDs, that aren't growing any better, because I lost them a year ago. But what you need to do is, hey, I will invest X amount of dollars. And then.
Well, let me explain, I don't, I don't think the court knew that all our money was fun. It's why we're having it, it is. Well, it doesn't make.
I mean, here's the thing, Judge, and let me clarify something, I don't mean to imply you've done a good job saving money, we've been getting some federal money in, you ain't had time to spend, but, I mean, I get it. I went down Rose Hill the other day and did a wedding. Then he knows he's been out there, that's one of the best roads we got out there. You do a good job, I ain't trying to say anything, but, uh. Well, I was looking at the fund balance, this dude is looking over there, wondering why, why is there a million dollars? You only got so many hands, and there's only so much you can do. There are pieces down, and we don't.
You know what that million dollars is called? Aange.
Exactly, I get it.
Wow, hey. But you, you've done, you've done a lot of road work. But I did, I, I, I don't want to argue, but I just think that's one thing, here, if it's cluttering, and do better for the public to know. Then they can look, they, they can go to the precinct and say, hey, Commissioner, how come you not spending so much money on my road? They don't even know I have that money, see? And I was spent four hundred something thousand dollars on road material this, this year.
You do one big, big project, and not, not that, yeah, I don't know, I'll save it up, then you can do a little something, you know?
But anyway, that's, that's something that I'd like to get to court, if we need to vote on it, I'd like to do that, a, at a proper time. If we don't need to, then, then the prosecutor knows that, and we can move forward.
You can even look at the, the rates on the super mile race that he wanted to get inside, whether you want to keep it that way.
You know, and the, the thing about it is.
The super mile race?
I'm doing, what I have is a split.
Split, that's what I'm talking about.
No, this is just a split.
Right, that's what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's, that, that's how she's been told.
To split out.
Did that, just doesn't.
So, I don't know what.
I guess it comes from all of you, some of them, I don't think it came from.
Well, that's, that's.
It comes from me.
It came from Kim. Kim's.
I, I, I asked her the other day, is that business like we've always done, like I referred to the other day?
Well, we, 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 we said, within the past two years, we haven't made any.
Even that always been a half a percent.
Yeah.
Max.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
But, uh, within two years, but that's what I, that's what I'm saying. It's just the last two years, you already making four and a half percent. Some five, if you, if you, what, I'm telling you, uh, and, and what I like to do is see a change, because, like I told Diddy, that's no disrespect to you, that's how you were tossed when you took office. But, that's our money, and we need to be investing it for the taxpayer, and we need to be spending it on the roads.
I agree. So what I, what I'm saying is, if you, you're investing a lot of money on the fund balance, and you go to her and say, put seven hundred fifty thousand on CDs now. Well, I, I, I'm not saying either that bank is, is secure, because of the kind of loan, because, the kind of business we are, but it's plenty.
They have to have a triple A rate.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's right, yeah.
They don't have a triple A rate, by law, we cannot invest with them. And there's only three, other than our bank here, there's only three or four in this, in the state of Texas that we are allowed to invest with, because they have a triple.
If it's other than, that Texaco is like the IC, under two fifty. Texaco, two fifty.
Texaco is right there, he's like four and a half, what state's one get there?
Texaco is, I can't pull it up, but I think, uh, Texaco is like five. Oh two, or something like that?
I don't know.
Five point oh two, something like that.
So, to me, that would be in the cities, when it, it's one of those things. I think it's, 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 it'd be more hands-on.
Sure.
By far, it's, it's short-term CDs, you run enough, say, here.
Our CDs are about. I'm raising.
But anyway, we can, we can, what's good for, a pretty good for.
But I can have Texaco, and Texaco last, also, with the, with the. But I can have tax pool, the tax class, also with the.
Well, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got our quality. It's at a.
I think we want to make money today.
Yeah.
But that was.
I think.
But what you said, shop.
I don't know.
Our, our, the way it is that goes in the system and it's every four years, every ten years where we can key up, like just extend our contract, but then we have to go out with it contract.
Right, rolling the dice.
So that would.
That's it. Snap down over.
You got a little change.
I think I'm getting close. I think we need to look at the three hundred revenue from. I don't think, I don't think we're up to speed on that. Let's help him get it figured out. Three hundred.
If I change the. We're making that thousand. We're still doing that report.
Thank you.
Sir, if you want to. I'm looking at, I'm looking at all of them, but I'm just looking at my notes. Oh, what I understand.
So far, the interest that the Brooklyn Rock General Fund has given to the county is fifty six.
Fifty six thousand.
Low over thirty six.
How much do this? How much fun balance do we have sitting there for a minute?
It's whatever's sitting in, I, I would have that report. It's whatever's sitting in that general fund account, that's the money that's spent, the home, the home account.
That's, that's the secret.
Yeah, that's. It's a point four five, yes.
You gotta have so much money sitting there to run, to run.
And it also depends on how much is coming in at that one, how much is going out.
I talked together the desk, it wasn't being more often. You know, we didn't talk to Jim. I don't think it's coming back up, but we still got something, got to do something there.
All right. Three hundred, three twelve.
In that virtue.
Yeah, I'm talking about the. I think we may have figured that.
Do you have the super now question? Well, a million of guys can fund nineteen.
Okay, that, that's another question. We want to go there. I don't think, and the fund here, I don't know if they know anybody, there's no fund like. I don't know, I don't know why I have this kind of millions of dollars of fun balance.
Oh, nineteen is, uh, capital construction expenses.
But that's got a million dollars of the offer money supposedly.
That's part of Florida. That's what somebody said.
That's where that capital is from.
I don't really understand how that.
I took it, I took, I took the offer money and put it in that fund.
I was gonna say, that's in there.
I know, but, but, but if you look, the offer money is in a different category. So if that million dollars is in there prior to the offer money, it, uh, it can't be in the fund. It's not, it's not. It says fund balance debt made during here, oh, nineteen eighty thousand.
The money that's transferred and put there, it's prior to.
Yeah, yeah, that thing was prior to. It was prior to here, prior to.
I saw it all through the journal entry, and I think you reminded me that we're moving taxes out, probably. So what you're saying is at least we put back the.
At least, yes, and that, actually, that, um, somebody just talked to the author, but I also, that might, at least, at least it was.
That needs to go away back in twenty.
This is the actual budget from last year. There is no million dollars in twenty nineteen last year. I don't know where that is.
It is money in that fund.
I get it, but what in twenty nineteen? You're saying that right, you need to make sure.
I agree.
But there is a million dollars in fund. There wasn't last year, the risk, according to this latest copy that they ran it up, it's come out of fund balance.
But there is money in that fund, wherever it came from, and it is in a fund balance of a million dollars.
I know we just need a million dollars to do the courthouse, and we have a courthouse. I just thought at first, is this, that may, this gotta be that million dollars. We need to roll it right back over into the fund balance. You don't spend the money, you go back in the fund. Work. All right, rest.
But it's just so you understand when you're pushing it in, I'll hand over.
Oh, if you can count out like in the rest of the budget, we can play it off. I can, and that budget that you got, it's not. I can't read the page today, but four zero, what happened, very clear.
Eighty dollars capital.
I look at.
Basically, funds out the year and then it gets to. Okay, can I buy?
No.
Because that parts it.
No. This is American.
Six pounds worth of money.
No, I think.
That's.
I got that. American has to do that.
Look at that.
Capital like. Don't, uh, more JP Technology. I mean, it's a, you know, but I haven't. Yeah, that, yeah, I've already sent them that they can't spend and they need to move down. But did they move that? Um, I think I've talked to.
You have to send them.
I, I've.
May another prepare this. And it's right there, it's a million dollars right there. I know, that's what I'm talking about, it's over here. That's, that shows last year, it's taken out of this line, for some reason, it's put over in that twenty nineteen, but I don't know. Did you see zero activity? This year. I'm not real sure why, other than.
Now those kids on the courthouse. I get it, but if you sign in, we think. So I'm saying. I just said twenty nineteen.
That is why I thought.
That's, that's what I think.
That million might need to go back in this oh ninety three. Got it. Is that a new change or is it?
Yeah. Well, I think maybe what is nineteen, from this looking to the other person, I have to look. Only those thirteen. Twenty nineteen.
Oh, ninety. I think. It's. The money went in the twenty nineteen. Cause there was nothing, they haven't carried over from last year's twenty nineteen.
Well, it looks like it was structured.
Yeah. Eight sixty nine. So I said it's got the X. So we need X out of the.
At least that million, that twenty nineteen needs to go back in oh ninety three, four oh nine three, five two zero. Capital out by Bill. Well, it's over a million, it's one million.
Whatever it is.
Five six dollars and forty five cents.
And H P. And H P. If the offer money don't have to be allocated.
Yes, you need to allocate all of that.
So.
Twenty ninety three.
Oh, 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 nine three, four, oh, nine three, oh, five, two, zero. So get on the. What else, please see?
JP Technology. JP Technology has been running in the red for the last three years. So, um, they, they need to, because that's not bringing in their revenue and it's not, uh, it's not, uh, there's more expense in there than there is, has been of revenue for the last three years, so.
What number is that?
One fifty. The same thing has been budgeted for like the last five years.
Now, let's see, we do, but I. For years, I didn't, I didn't want to touch that, I got to have to touch it, and I wrote through it, I don't think they got that. JP Technology. So if they're broke, then they make thirty three hundred and fifty eight dollars in interest.
Because their money has been put in investment in the tax pool and hasn't been pulled out. So it's been getting interest on the, the tax pool, but the cash account is in the red, so.
Well, that's an upgrade in any profit sense. We need to cash in the CD and put in the interest.
Well, I think it's tax pool, it's not CD, right?
Whatever it is.
But it's still gonna leave a deficit in there, so everything this year I've got to move and recover. But if you look at the, look at what was budgeted and look at what's been brought in and what they've spent, you can see the trend as it goes from the years.
Now, I believe in the CDs alone, putting everything on the credit cards.
Well, the thing is, 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 it's been, money's been going out when there's more money in it. Yeah, the, the money, it used to bring in a lot more revenue, but I think in the, the legislation, cut those fees down in, in the prior years, and the, the money's like been cut like in half, so. But you can see what's been brought in over the last three years and see how much money has went out.
So my rate is right, total revenue is fifty one seventy three.
That's counting the fund balance that should have never been used also, forty three thousand of that is spent on, look at it.
Forty three thousand nine nine hundred dollars. I see that way back to the left, prior year.
That's.
Sixty. You have to allocate some of their fund, but if they have fund balance and they're, they're renting truck revenue.
If they didn't have that much fund balance, is what I'm saying.
Why is it in here? Why is this, why is this so?
Because it was used.
Twenty twenty one shows forty three thousand nine hundred fund balance. Twenty twenty two shows forty three thousand nine hundred fund balance. Twenty twenty three shows forty three thousand nine hundred fund balance.
That's what I'm saying, it shouldn't be there. It never was like that.
I'm telling you, say, oh. Well, that's it. You got my savings, you're putting it out on credit.
So I would just to get per their normal revenue, what they look like they've been bringing in for each of the precincts, just, just that, and on the other side, just barely spent any of that.
So in JP one expenditure, it shows three hundred dollars.
Right.
JP two, seven hundred dollars. JP three, one hundred dollars. JP four, a hundred and fifty dollars. Well, that's cutting it back pretty good.
Well, what I'm saying is, is that's if they bring in that amount of revenue. And if they don't bring in that revenue, they're gonna have to understand that they can't spend.
That's your gun.
That's what I'm saying right there.
It's cause it's all paper. It's like we're gonna go out and buy. We had to split the first dollar in tax, you know?
So is that thing they move to the account? Anytime you used to talk around. Oh, they say tighten the.
Yeah.
All right, so back, back up there, we're gonna leave the twenty nineteen. I'm gonna add a million dollars to the offer money, should be back to.
Oh, oh, nine three, yes, yeah, three, five, two, zero.
Well, we got a few minutes. From fund balance. Just like what I think was there.
Yes.
And, and it goes in, in the expense on the house. Whatever the total should be, this million, one thousand nine nine six forty five, or whatever it is that makes a balance. Make sure all of them are same page. I've got a million even on here, and it probably is the one.
They have to.
I get you. If it was already in this fund last year, it shouldn't have, the ninety three, it shouldn't have rolled in the general.
But it was.
Should say, those, those fund balances, all these individual funds that have.
The numbers?
No, you just, I, they just.
I'm just saying that it's, it's. Oh, we're, we're, it went into that nineteen.
Absolutely.
I think it's what we did.
Cause there was, in this book, last year's actual budget, there was no.
And, and with her, with, with talking to her, when she gets his report from the office, it's fund balance. It's definitely a knowledge of twenty nineteen, which is probably not there.
I agree, it's gotta go back in this, over here.
So it should be there.
So up in the top, we added a new line to the ninety three fund, it says inmate, inmate housing contracts.
That is the, that is using the.
That's the payout contracts you're in? Were we paying the house inmates?
Yes, we're paying the house, the inmates from the L E T, uh, L T. The travel funds.
There's one of the funds we determined we could do that.
Yes.
You got that? Okay, you good on that?
I'm just trying to make sure that's what we're doing.
Sure.
Everybody's on the same page.
No, you're right, good catch.
Shows one million, one nine nine six forty five. Make sure all of it, all the balance is in it.
Making.
Twenty nine, forty nine, nine six, forty five.
Now, those, those travel funds are in that fund balance as well, because it's in that fund.
Well, that's the travel fund that's been in. The other thing that I had to do was. In the three hundred, zero, nine nine eight, when I started this one year. Twelve and twelve hundred, and the twelve.
Wait a minute, you said.
Three hundred, yeah, I think it's fund balance. Twelve, three hundred.
Yeah. Twelve, three hundred, what?
Zero, nine, nine, eight.
Have you looked at that?
Yeah, in the original question, you got a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the range is like, I don't know what's in. And the rest is like, I don't know what's in the, what's in the debt.
Because we had contingency. Now we've got no contingency, but it's funded.
Alright, we've got to put one eighty-three, nine, twenty-sixty-six back in.
What, five?
It's coming from Harvard funds. Twelve, if you're looking four nine, twelve, four nine. Five twenty.
Clear. Capital outlaying the impact. What's going to do to the impact?
We're gonna put this money back. It's just blocking.
That's the money that we still had to spend fixing up that bill.
We've got to put that, we've got to put in the fund balance. We got to put back out some of that.
The main about how to consider. Transfer.
So maybe better just to go ahead and return that back to Martha, you know?
I'd say put it back in, get back on the shelf. Yeah, put it in there. Well, you can actually put the revenue in there for that also. And rest, come on, let me push.
It's gonna be.
That money rolled into your exactly what I want.
That's right.
So, that's right.
So.
That animal shelter also has money, if you look at it.
It shouldn't have. I thought we done spent, spent that.
No, there's a little bit.
Yeah, you're right. It does have to go in and then it goes right back out. What fund? Keep it up this morning?
Well, what's the new, the new question? Had that in your album or something?
No, it's not. Thank you, everybody, for all the support. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
So there's seven thousand four hundred and nine dollars and seventy-seven cents left out of that animal control.
I'll just leave it there.
That's a. Well, I was gonna say, I was gonna do the same thing. It's gonna, I'll just put it over here in this line. That was.
Yeah, put it right back in there.
Put it right back in there and it's still gonna come out of fund balance.
So the fund balance has been played in number ten to a cent.
That's all we have in the schedule sign, Martha, from Martha.
For the, for the article ten.
Well, now you're up to an awful lot of dudes and youngs.
I think pretty much every time, Martha, there's a script there, and today before we go on heroin, it's gonna be three thousand, something like that, cost about ten hundreds. I did, I'm running a trailer, it's a hundred and twenty thousand, so.
That's how you give me like a fund balance, or if you did much of Martha, again, you got to spend, had to, you had to give it back. You can't put it, spend your own money before you spend that. You got to end it with fear of spending that, and I know y'all, I appreciate the way y'all are testing, you know, spin off and spirit.
So we, just, I had a call from one of the senior citizens, and we broke this up. One of them, we made him walk a little bit, and whatever, we scrub them together and we'll be very happy, I tell you. If you don't break social, you got to hit him now.
I said, that came out, special fund. I had more than that.
Somebody called me. They're struggling.
They're struggling. So we can find out, find out those sales tax.
I, I don't know, is, is it in there ever since I've been commissioner? Interesting.
Sure, it would put in there because that's what we use to act, to deck off, bring stuff that's hard to eat. Play in there, go up in that.
I mean, I'm gonna fail as long as it pays for me. I mean, so, probably it's hard, so.
That's better than poking.
I'd be thirteen thousand from, from four, and three goes Cleveland, and two goes separate, and one goes this one.
Is that any motion?
I just wanna make sure that, that.
Yeah.
My increase to senior citizens donation to a thousand dollars a piece, so it would be thirteen thousand times four in total.
Did you know of that?
Mr. David, you have a problem with that, Dave?
No.
Just make sure we talk and make sure we make the work we did that, and make the right attempt.
We just did it. We just leave residence for thirty, seven, eight, four, like, come back, hook that line up. We made the residence of four, raised the funds.
Is there a mega? What are they like? What are they got, Bud? What are they fit of conversion?
You got it. Fun after that.
There's another.
I didn't do it, so that's. You got it, of course, not the interest rate. Seven? What's the seven?
It is, um, uh, four eighty-five in the general. We're increasing all the thousand dollars.
So are you still on that, is that the last number, percent one?
No, it's not. I, that's why I just made myself a note that I didn't do that term.
So, not, not, I mean, it needs to be, is it zero? You need that one, four, eight, one for the count, that's what I'm asking. It looks weird.
I'm usually down a order. One, it should be one, two, three, four.
The counter set up accordingly.
I'm saying for the last line, probably three, it's one, four, eight, one.
That's right. It's kind of, the rest of them are zeros. You got them out of order on the page.
I, I, these were in here before.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that does look down.
It's too much like, I mean, we are, zero, no.
There's got one and four going to the six, both go to one.
Is that like, is that like a typo?
I have never, when whoever sent it, I have sent it never. I can look in it and see if I can adjust it.
Should we do a four again? So one, four, eight.
But because it's so many years of activity, I don't know if I can change, but I'll see. No, that's how I was.
So the first district called was one fifty-four, nine, one sixty-two. Can they increase that now?
Hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars.
All these are around the.
No, that's just the neighborhood, I believe. I don't know the exact number. So, Commissioner Layton, I'm really happy. It's this, you're on the place of board. Why'd they, why'd we get a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar up increase? Ms. Davis, you're on the board as well. What happened? Speaking of that, did they ever see a couple of the schools going, I got some taxes, I hope? They doing a, they gonna have a real question.
That's, that's somebody taxing us discount for.
Yeah, they, everybody else on that voted to deduct their, that's the total impact it has on the county. To get that big deduction, a lot of people voted for it, wasn't paying taxes, rent or self-fee. This is how, how it shakes out. The county ends up paying a whole conclusion, a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That brings our total up to like three quarters of a million, if you pay. To fund an eleven thousand dollar increase in the budget. I can't comprehend that man.
But then the figures were using like the twenty-three figures, not the four.
Well, did they use the discount?
Or twenty-three figures and then the twenty-three rates, but it's not that rate, it's the twenty-four.
If they take their real bank, real rate, real tax rate, tax thirty-two percent, they're gonna come back and give us that discount, because that's gonna change.
If they vote it down, though.
I don't know. I doubt it would.
Well, if they were, if people were to stand up, vote it down, they would, our, our bill comes up to about a million, so I don't know. Scott, they gotta be paid. And we're cutting our rate, we can figure, we're cutting our rate fifty-three, one five oh seven seven, whatever it is. We get a increase, I don't, I don't, that's.
They're figuring the number twenty-four rate, or figuring the number twenty-three rate. Because they don't have twenty-four. Normally, and I'm gonna say this, because when Margie kinda looked in it, I kinda looked into it and back into how they were calculating.
I don't care how they calculate, if I can calculate, we got, we're out a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. That would get stupid.
That ain't against me, because it's not my job. I'm just, you know, we're kind of, they're, I was taking, I was just trying to.
I think it's, I think it's all based on how much taxes you collect.
Yes, it's, it's the calculation. I'd have to go back and look at.
The election tax on how much you collect, to check that you get your payments and raise your taxes.
Yeah.
Something wrong there.
Yeah, they figured out a percentage. I, I figured it all out, but I don't have it looking. I figured out how they were using it, but normally they give that to you when they give you the budget in April to look at it and either vote for what they were putting out or vote against it.
Well, we did give a little rebate back this year. That was just out of the box.
If you.
We've always been doing rebate. And no, we're, we're, no, no, we're doing rebate. They just rolled into their fund balance, so to speak, which one year, I got away with. Yeah, yeah, they did. They did do that. That's not how it's supposed to work. Our commandments are, you know, you did spend all your budget, you're supposed to give it back. Can we take a five minute recess?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm learning. I'm great anyway. We'll take about five minutes. That's a great recess.
Sit time went away. So, and I know that everything went out without, y'all said that sit time wouldn't roll over and be in a way.
How did you go out to your wife's family?
No, she said that, that her sit time was not paid out. Right, right. So it was just gone.
Lost, yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I have no problem with that. My question is, so October one, I'm walking in here like I'm a new employee with no vacation and no sit time. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so, so did you, did you hear your vacation?
I did. I'm not gonna say that I didn't, but it was, I've not taken a whole week, Monday through Friday. I've taken two days and a week here, and that's about it. I've been here seven years.
A lot of people do it.
Yeah, but I've been here seven years, so I'm walking as a new employee with nothing in my bag. Nothing.
Were you, have you been posting a clock the last couple of years?
Yes, I've always done that. She's, I've always submitted.
You know, we've got a salary.
Yes.
We require all of them, but we invite some of them to get their conscience.
You say we require, you don't say yet, do you? They're on salary, but they had a foul assumption.
And that's in the law, too.
What does that, we're gonna do type law, are you?
That's right.
Y'all haven't seen.
I haven't. Y'all do your job, too. I know.
So what do you, what is?
So, no question, so, and for seven years of employment, I'm walking in here, October one, as a new employee with nothing in my bag. Uh, you go. You were paid out.
Yes, so, I, I think that's the same thing is.
You got paid out, or you got, you ain't like it all, you lost it all, you got. You got paid out, or you got, it ain't like it all, you lost it all, you got paid. Yes.
But yeah, that is a free. Not, not.
It wasn't free, but you got paid out. So no, you don't get all that.
Taxes. Just definitely taxes.
No, it's not.
I guess we've got to see another, another board sign. We got another board sign. I understand the point. I mean, I, I get it.
I do, but they did take some off.
Uh-huh, I agree. Commissioner, I didn't hear what you said. I said I can, I can get her point, but you gotta, you're doing the transition, you're gonna be a starter. Well, the DDA's, they do that. She, I'm setting it right up. They had to use time on their themselves. And you had to go back and look at C D, if they argued.
So where we at?
Where we at? Some questions or?
Yeah, where we at?
You heard, I got, I got a couple of questions.
Okay, we at, and then, oh, it's the emergency manager, a full-time employee. Do we need that? Judge?
You get around here and all that, and throw out your sit time, I don't need it. That, that's just part time, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, I don't. She only, he don't have so much part time.
So.
They don't, you know.
So, okay, I, I agree. I agree. But you, you gonna tell me, we got a, we got a full-time land district that signs at our county from the state. And then you got a full-time employee and you want another one?
He's not hot employee. I'm looking for something.
Well, I show up at Rex's. I know Rex not your employee, but the state is saying maybe your fourth sentence in a county. And we got a full-time person that I can remember when I was a hand, and he was part-time, and he done it, I'm done. And has the disasters changed that much since then? I don't know, but I'm not in that. But I'm just trying to say, you know, we added people, and I made this next another day. That sometimes you gotta be more with less.
Did you possess a position? You got a position?
Yes.
Or you got one that you had in the year?
I've had it for four years, strictly because I can use that money if I need it for something else. But if I run across an A number one, hand, I can fill it. Other than that, you can't fill that position only if.
Please excuse me.
And there again, that's called management. So I'm just asking questions for the court. I mean, are we building the big government, or are we trying to do, everybody pull their load? I've had.
I know, I know, spent some time over in Seattle.
I did spend some time over there.
So I didn't ever see you up there.
Well, that's another, same time, you're not over all the time.
But I keep pretty close, I don't.
Well, that's good. That, then you do, you know that you don't make two full-time people.
Certainly do.
Certainly.
You get your ass a little down in the coat there.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm, I'm not talking. If we need it, we need it, Judge, but I can tell you that the only time he's busy is during the hurricane, and how often do we have it? Are during the storm, how often do we have it?
It's not the only time he's busy. There's always.
Well, you create your, you create your other stuff. I mean, I'm just, I've said my things, I let the court say it. It's not my call anymore. It is certainly not your call by yourself. It's the court's call.
The court's taking the vote on it, no say. I didn't, I never said it was just my call.
I didn't get extra position because I did it myself. I got it through.
This court, you probably should have a position. If you've had one for five years and you've never used it before.
I can have two.
If you set it up on a land, keep building, you.
I can, I can put my down since you did your chest over. I'm not beating my chest. You, you're the one that beat me up over.
I can take it back too.
I hate to see you. Is your road blacked out?
No.
It was when you lived in three C.
Well, that's a seven, a lot pretty strong.
I, I just don't understand why that we keep building. I, I know that we added.
Is your road blacked out? Then maybe you just blacked out the road, it only goes to your place, your family property.
Oh, I know, a red road. I got a red road.
When you turn off Forest Service Road, that blacked out road, it only goes to double major. Is that true, Liz?
You know that's right. And you know that the court paid me thirty-seven thousand dollars donated to do that blacktop. Damn, I forgot about that.
My road's not blacktop. I'm happy to do my road. My commissioner keeps it just fine.
Okay, well, I'm just saying.
It gets in a bind, I don't even have to talk to you, he takes care of that reference. I appreciate it.
Only thing I gotta say about that whole bill over is this. I think it's a piss poor thing that the state of Texas come in here, T M did, and took our employee. And I think it's a piss poor thing, and I hope someone calls them and tells them how we really did it. Because they've been doing his job, they've been doing their job, they wouldn't have time to talk to each other. Sorry, that's just the way I feel. I think that the state of Texas come in here and stolen our employees.
I think you've been doing a fantastic job.
I never said that. I'm just telling you what I think. I think it's just piss poor the way they did it.
I agree with you. I couldn't agree with you more about it. The year before, they took the money that we were using to put on the positions, and I had a fellow who was. Keeps their hand on the ground out here.
And we had no say. Anyways, that's just my opinion.
Yes. Need two of these? One more?
This is getting dangerous, goddamn.
What else you got? Commissioner, you said couple of.
I said it. I don't want to say no comment. I read every time I read one, but Judge don't like exactly what I said, me. Probably, me, I, I, I can take it though, Judge, and I ain't managing.
I appreciate it.
I'm just trying to state the facts, you know, and that's the way I believe, and.
You come up here and talk mercy management from the word go. You cut eight thousand dollar part-time out. You walked up here with your big chief notebooks, and that was the only thing that got cut out. A lady had taken, she died of cancer, and she canceled out her health insurance so she could do a budget. But I'm changing from what you know about mercy management, okay? That's all I gotta say about it.
That's all.
I don't expect anything different from this. Well, we made it now. We got it out of our system.
I don't feel very good.
Feel no better. I'm ready to be done with this budget, so I guarantee you that.
Well, I ain't ready to go. I'm gonna beat this horse dead.
I think the motion to help the budget with these changes that I've got. And there's gonna be a list of it. The DA request a fair end from the seventy-two twenty-two one. Say what? The DA, this happened on six, sixteen, and twenty-fourth. This is what we've said to do. The DA requested students' tuition and training in four, in four twelve, it was a thousand dollars. And in four nine seven, new ADA gone, it was a hundred dollars. Four twenty-nine, it was two hundred dollars in fruits. And so the DA needed to sign. So we've already moved all that. I'm just clearing out. These changes that we, when we came back and they had the public hearing, and we sit there and do everything, I don't know. If we've already, it's the ones that come up, that weren't talked about in court, that people won't slip in on the back door. That's, I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. I'm just repeating everything that we can just do. Well, that's good. That's good. Go ahead, sir. On eight twenty-eight twenty-four, we moved seven of land. Two hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. That's about. We put that in.
Right, 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 right.
In income. We also added auto test force, which is fifty-two thousand, eight oh one, eight five now. With, with the current rates. That's revenue.
Just so I can put a thing.
We build them and got them, pay up for that.
With that, that's less our ten thousand dollars, so it's really, you add that ten thousand to it, it would be a sixty, sixty-two thousand. But less than ten thousand that we paid in our match, yes. That's all that.
But there wasn't any income in that line when we first had the budget.
Right.
But it is now.
Yes.
Uh, in four hundred and four oh two, we decreased that line out, rose it to zero, uh, thousand dollars to zero. And that's five ten. In twelve four oh three, five ten, we increased that line out by fifteen hundred. It must've been three thousand, so that's, we reduced it by fifteen hundred, so. That's fifteen now. Twelve four oh nine, zero five five one, Joe Root. I have a bound here, it's four hundred and fifty. Six nine. Four hundred and fifty nine. I got four eighty-eight sixty-two seventy-five. Four fifty, eight sixty-two seventy-eight, I've got it there. And those revenues, uh, came from wanting to sell the land. We used contingency, we had a hundred fifty-two thousand in the first place that we used contingency.
You deleted the contingency.
Contingency was deleted by the, the sale of land made the difference. In twelve four hundred, zero four eight eight, we increased that line out. One four, we increased it nineteen thousand dollars to one fourteen. Was it number one? Twelve four oh nine four eight eight. Somebody had it. We looking that up?
That's insurance?
There's no hesitation.
Yeah, it's properly cashed.
We increased it nineteen thousand dollars. Should be one fourteen in there then. That's in. In district court, in twelve, zero four ten, zero two two one, we increased that line out seventy thousand dollars, which is a total of two hundred and five dollars. Yes. In twelve four ten, zero two two five, we increased that thirty-five thousand, which is double sixty thousand. In twelve, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. In twelve four ten, zero four six three, we increased that by two thousand dollars, which we should be twenty thousand. In twelve, four eleven, in zero seven eight, which is part-time, we decreased that by five thousand dollars. In four four eleven, zero four one two, we decreased that line out by three thousand dollars. In twelve, four thirteen, we increased that line out by a thousand dollars. In five ten, we decreased that by a thousand dollars. Wait a minute. Four thirteen. Four thirteen, what one? Five ten. We decreased it by five. We increased that by a thousand dollars. It's not thirty-nine. And then we decreased five hundred, half of, especially quarter four.
Yes.
Zero two seven four. About five hundred dollars. Let's see, one, she still here? Uh, we decreased zero zero five, which will be. A bit long, Jim. I might have the wrong number. Zero zero eight. About six, sixteen hundred, right? Yeah. Part-time temporary. Decreased by, no, we decreased it by sixteen hundred. Sure, me free. Since we're not using this proposed one here, she didn't have anything in there, it was in there at sixteen hundred. I've gotta be taking that out. What's the new? Zero zero eight, part-time. Yeah, I'm going to do it to. Got zero, got zero out. So zero nine nine out, which is part, that was sixteen hundred last. No. Yeah, yeah, well, this is the actual budget. I'm gonna say, I'm guessing for both of them. Well, they, they do budget payments sometimes.
She did. She zeroed it out because she utilized that money and put it down in her travel. So that's why it looks like it's zero. But we zeroed it out because, um, our.
She didn't use it. She took it. They go into her school, it comes along. We took my notes. We, we took sixteen hundred out of there.
Why?
We zeroed it out. Well, that's right. That's right. And then in twelve, uh, four twelve, school tuition launched, and I've just decreased by a thousand dollars, which is. Well, they went, they went way over. So we, it was proposed twenty-five, and we decreased it fifteen hundred. Well, maybe what it was proposed, but it actually stayed the same as what was in last year's budget. She'd asked for a little repub, and I.
She'd asked for a little bump, and I guess we put it in there initially, and then it got, your rights taken back out.
All right, JP two, all we did there was decrease two fifty-one by a thousand dollars.
Training?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they hadn't, they hadn't, they hadn't been used in that lot, for whatever reason. That's right.
In JP four, we decreased the school tuition by a thousand dollars. Let me move back to four, let me take four right quick. One thing that I've got in here, JP four, we increased a thousand dollars. From the proposed twenty-five hundred, so we could let your fifteen hundred go. School and tuition back.
That should have been deducted from last year's official budget. I had, I had to put an increase in there, 'cause they were going to a lot of schools. She, but she went to a lot of schools, but she was new, she got a term, or about, or a part of her term. You don't have to go to the new, new JP schools every year, it's two hours, you keep it in there.
All the terms, the next one I've got, twelve four thirty-one, five-ten, flat out of five-ten, it's decreased by eight hundred dollars. Five-ten, we.
Five-ten, I appreciate fixed assets, so it's zero, that's a zero. Five-ten and five-nine.
Five-ten was decreased by eight hundred, five-nine was decreased by five thousand, and four twelve was decreased by five thousand.
Four twelve, I don't see that.
School tuition, a lot of the statistics. Six five hundred. Anybody?
Nine four.
Four four.
Seven five. Seven five.
They were locked in. It was, it was twenty-five hundred last year, and it's still twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, but it had raised.
It was proposed twenty-five hundred.
Oh, yeah, okay, got you, got you, I'm with you.
All right, and then, uh, move to the treasure. We decreased line item. Three nine nine, about a thousand dollars. And four twelve, about a thousand dollars.
One should be four thousand, another twenty-five hundred.
Yes, that was two hundred.
Yes, that's right.
I don't remember taking from my, my schools and stuff, I don't remember taking from my class from my schools.
Well, that's pretty good news, you said it.
Did I?
Yep. You were good news, that's where I started jumping, I guess.
Tax office, we increased our part tax, uh, she objected with this, totally. About ten thousand dollars.
What is?
Twenty-six oh three point.
Yes, four thousand, sixty-three point.
Well, that wasn't appreciated. Wouldn't you tell them, crack their dead hands, you haven't found their tracker dead hands, pride dead feet?
What did she say?
You haven't used that, so that.
Because I do that.
I know.
But I ain't, I'm like, I feel for it.
Building maintenance. Building maintenance, we cut.
Good management, is what it is.
Yes, ma'am.
Four five hundred.
Four thirty-six cap, is that what you told?
Uh, building maintenance, yes.
What number?
Uh, four times, yes, right, four thousand.
Should be four thousand.
Yes, sir. All line control, is the next one to run out. Twelve forty, jurisdiction of relation, it's cut that in half. We're not five, we took, we took five.
That's right.
Precinct one, council, we added seventeen, it's a good thing, we added seventeen, for miles. Precinct, we didn't do anything in precinct two, in precinct three, we, as we discussed earlier, we added bonds, and then we took thirty-seven fifty from stock. Precinct, yes, four, we added seven ten for miles.
Yes, sir.
Sheriff Foreman, I've got only one decrease, and that's a line item, two two four nine. Higher than regular. We increased that by five thousand, it's low seven thousand.
That's five thousand.
Yes.
Should be, yes, sir.
We decreased by five, simply said.
Okay, well, this, this budget's got.
Two two four nine.
Four nine.
I've got, we decreased by.
So, it's five hundred.
We left five thousand in.
All right.
Decreased by seven.
We decreased by seven, we're gonna be five hundred. Which is more than that, it's been, and I'll cook. Attention center. I don't have anything, just need a notice.
I don't know that we made any changes here. It's tempting to shut something when you're a jail operating, but if you don't get it back going, you just now got enough, enough employees to satisfy the jail commission, so we don't wanna go through that cycle. I don't know.
All of this, my is DPS. Just, we increased that by three thousand, on. Zero five two four, capital.
Increased five hundred, three thousand two thousand.
Yeah, we added zero now.
Right, yes, sir.
Next one I have is most minutes, which, which is how we talk about it. Increase four time to four time, and we just get that in there if you have. Third quarter plus half is. And then we've got, I thought we took it, kept it on vehicles.
Oh, good. Actually, I, I think was, I think it was Brendan going there, we've got some nine teen thousand TVs. And he, he gets some great big ones, when he, they went to Walmart last weekend, and got about four or five big, they took it out of this year's budget, so we can take that out.
So, zero five five zero, it's kept by the vehicles. We took zero that, uh, took fifty thousand down.
So, we're getting five hundred, you remember?
Yes, I think, that's what I'm saying, what we did. With, uh.
Three thousand?
We get a big thousand of carried out by the vehicles. Can you go back to three thousand, get that, and out the car?
That was for TV, I don't know if that will be it, it's 'cause he's got a late model, he, he's got a, finally, and he bought TVs out of some other, somewhere.
So, I weigh three thousand, isn't it?
You want me to do it?
I really don't know where it would go.
That's what you have.
I thought that was for TV. But he's bought, I'm telling you, he's bought.
I got that before I saw it.
That's what I think.
Thank you for that.
Do you know?
We talked about four TVs, we bought a hundred and eighty.
Four TVs, that's what I thought. I don't know why it was in vehicles, you came down a vehicle.
Probably because that's the only capital out late.
Could be, yes, that's, yes, sir.
So, are we gonna zero that amount?
Zero.
Yeah.
So, we got it. So, you're gonna take, you're gonna change it.
There, there's, was there any other?
The only things we needed was two laptops for emergency tasks, and we were supposed to be, and to roll in my office.
Just not appreciate this.
Those are what we could still need.
So, there are some things they had on the, on this list, but you shouldn't go under. Why don't you take a thousand of that three thousand, put it in fixed assets, and then cut two out of it?
What are we doing?
Just making a suggestion. Yes, sir. Make that thousand, two thousand, and then make that three thousand a zebra, which is a net, uh.
So, increase the check.
No, which is a net, uh, two thousand.
Yes, sir.
One fifty-two, decrease.
Seven thousand, uh, zero, two zero, yes, and then four, two thousand, and operate fixed assets. It should be two thousand total.
I don't see nobody going, I'm telling you.
Right.
We're just kinda going over the next one, we have senior citizens.
We have a thousand dollars for precinct. We have that one, we have precinct.
I'm sorry, I'm senior citizen, I personally had a thousand dollars, get seventy thirteen thousand for precinct.
Yeah, that's what we said long ago.
They're taking on your job. Back in the, I keep, I, I don't know why I skipped that one. Where did they?
And I put that, I don't remember if I added one, we, we did that in the courts this year, I think we did it in court.
You know, edit permission budget, you did it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's all.
That's one thing I had in here, and nobody, uh, addicted to that recall, because. So, yeah, yeah, that's why I thought you went past.
Sanitation, our, my next line of events is to reduce sanitation fund balance by one thirty-nine, one sixty-nine, forty.
What happened to it? Did you go through nine on the law, or any of them?
I haven't yet, I'm just, I'm just gonna tell my husband.
Go take a look. What number is that?
Zero zero twenty-seven, sanitation fund balance.
Yeah.
To use money in the bank, I guess.
Instead of the money, instead of using the money, it's general, the general fund balance is funding it.
See, that's the money that we're stood, I guess I have to.
If you save your little money during the year.
But why doesn't it even have a fund balance?
It should.
It shouldn't.
He should have rolled back in, but that's just a bookkeeping way of.
I mean, I just, you're, you're asking, I'll let you ask.
Also, it makes money in the super now part of the investment.
Well, it shows how much good a job you're doing, but that basically shows you saved that much money during the year. Yeah, I mean, it does.
I agree, but look at what's funny, I spent the last whole year, so, I mean, it's just, it's just a continuing cycle.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So, you asked, I asked, what I thought about extension.
Nine one one's the next one in our loop, so.
I didn't think they changed it.
I don't know.
I didn't think so either.
I don't think it is.
I would salary.
I don't, I don't. I think.
Salary.
We'd change it, if, if, have changed that.
We didn't change it.
From the original proposed budget.
Yeah. I mean, it works, y'all can all make the pay.
Moving to fire portion.
Fire portion, yeah.
Then he gets fifty cent, wait, hold on.
You, you said four time, you get fifty cent right there, okay. So, we're including the negative, probably. All right, one thing I do, and clarify while I'm thinking about it, if we did propose a thousand dollar raise in this motion for employees and elected officials across the board, anybody across the court now?
Yeah.
In my motion, that's what we're doing, employees and elected officials.
Except for that one, in the proposal, we worked through that, and the budget was.
Going to the next one, that is, in my precinct board, we're gonna have a line item to support care, fifty-six thousand, that's with the wages, plus benefits. Rich Mars, who does support after that, is completely not having, thirty thousand is what they've moved on.
But we're hoping y'all join in too, though, the big one to come up.
I probably need a word in law.
Well, we, we manage that by everybody.
Yeah, this is, this is. Madam.
You got enough, you got enough in four nine to do that. And Phil, since, we're gonna get a lot of them bad. So, in precinct four, also, I have a hundred fifty thousand in match, that's what I'm wondering, I'm linking that hundred fifty thousand on. What, what, it's not ready to fund careless, we'll go with the other things, what's he gonna? The seven, nine one 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 line, that you got, fifty-six thousand. The very last line, I don't have to look at it, see what it says.
I've got some decreases, decreases in my, I'm gonna tell you that's mine.
Mine, mine, like, is, I'm gonna lay it, is four ten.
Yeah, I've got some, we may all change, they go, they don't, I'll, 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 I'll give me, go through all of them, I'll put it. No, you're a full time secretary, and so.
She did it all right, but that first line of the secretary, what, she, she missed the.
It's some, it's some, it's caught.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, I'm, oh, no, and I, I had previously ordered them, uh, on duty truck. And it not comes, don't come in until this budget, so I moved the money forward, that's the forty-nine thousand, uh, dollars that I moved forward, send capital out late being.
So, pretty much, precinct one, through forty-nine thousand, where'd you move it from? Just out of this year's fund balance?
Yeah.
So carry forward forty nine thousand?
Carry forward forty nine thousand.
And you're gonna reduce, you're very comfortable today, you can reduce the current position.
Hit my, yes, it's going to go down to forty nine thousand nine hundred and ten seventy.
That's hard time, man. One thing that we're gonna do is delete the capital fund construction matching, which is a million dollar. We'll probably talk about it, and then Arthur Fox will get two million from the Arthur Fox end balance, back into capital out of vehicles. Yeah, I think, as a bookkeeper looks at it, I think it didn't get spent or rolled back into the general, but it just, it'll show back up in that. In my fund, uh.
Talking to Carolyn, actually, that was not, that nineteen is not, it is a, it was an entry made by the outside auditors. And I would get with the, Lewis on that, I've already put the million dollars back in to fund balance and to the budget of the Arthur funds, so. So it's back where it was supposed to be.
I got two on mine, just three thousand. Uh, one is two three, so if you take five line, you're gonna have to make five lines on it. Pre living, strip, and, uh, on this one here, about a line high of four three three two. That we're using right now, so that, that. Four three three two?
Yeah.
Four three three two?
It's a, it's a.
And special road project. Three fifty six. That number's gonna change. We can see a four three three two. Uh, three five six. So you want to add a line, add a line, precinct three four. See, a caller calls the permit.
Caller named five nine.
So, yeah, but you know that goes to the permit office, and then they charge twenty five, and then they give us two.
Yes, sir, I don't have the line I'm getting for it.
Frank, just, I'm just retracting permits.
Martin, that works together.
And you're gonna use this, move the special road project, move around.
No, we're using it now, it's showing, it's showing four hundred and seventy two thousand, I'm trying to this part of my. We're using that. Listen, I don't want anybody to.
So you're not changing anything, you're just telling people. You're using that right now. We're using it right now, but it's in the next year's budget, so maybe change it, maybe we'll change, that's what I'm saying, we'll change. It's gonna change by the end, by the end of this month. You're only gonna carry forward what's left in there, Jack. Are you, are you aware of that, Martin?
Um, yeah, we were talking about it earlier, so you're gonna need to adjust it again.
Yeah, at the end of this calendar year, whatever he was carrying forward, whatever just left in there.
So next.
Probably next quarter.
Well, next quarter, we have two of them.
We're not good with second, but we're finishing up, and now we'll have it till the end of this week. I think that's why I'm making everybody aware.
And my, my suppose is the same, we're not using them right now, so they're changing, they may change by the end of, end of this year.
That's one, that's one. So if you want to go away and enter.
All right. I've got a line on, I don't have six hundred thousand that's passed this current budget here. And at the, this printing of this thing, it says four seventy two. I guess what you're saying is, seventy two. Yeah, this place transfer out of seven hundred. But you don't know exactly what it, you don't have to retract it. Obviously, she understands it, you understand what she's, what he's done now?
Yes, that it hasn't totally finalized right now, and that there are these numbers that will probably be a double up, right?
Whatever comes out there.
I'm sorry, I was listening to you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Because you didn't have a figure, right?
That's.
Yeah, remember we bought a kitchen for back there? Yes, yes, sir. Well, maybe they are. Save the cattle out, huh? What else, sir? In the three, in the twelve, three hundred zero nine nine eight, we talked about this other, it needs to be one hundred and ninety four thousand, nine thirty, without three hundred. One hundred and four, nine thirty, and forty three cents, it needs to be. Put back in Arthur funds.
Well, three hundred, what?
Zero amount of that, which is from general fund balance. Due from general fund balance.
Those are the total Arthur funds.
Total Arthur funds, that we rolled into general fund, it was one spin, and now we have to be put back in Arthur funds.
Right.
So that same amount, how many now? One, two, just two different places.
Right, there's one through two different monitors.
One eighty three, five, twenty sixty six, put back into five twenty. Forty seven, yeah, seven thousand.
The line below it, seven hundred, seventeen thousand four hundred. Seven thousand four hundred and nine dollars and seventy seven cents.
What?
Line out of number, uh, four nine, zero five two five.
I thought we were in the revenue section. We did, you, you did, you took one ninety four, nine thirty, forty three, out of the Sheriff's Fund money numbers. Put it in.
One ninety, one ninety what?
One ninety four, nine thirty, forty three.
Yes, sir.
That's. You put that where it came from, back where it came from, twelve four, five twenty. Twelve four, five twenty four. Uh, what are the numbers? Capital that line playing.
How many did you kept out?
Oh, one eighty three, five twenty sixty six.
Yes.
If they can keep the, keep out of there for the.
Yeah.
Seven thousand four nine seventy seven, goes where, what you told her?
That was the animal.
The animal control that was left. Seven thousand four nine seventy seven. Seven nine seventy seven. Yes, sir, yes, sir. We have ten exempt employees to irony, and the fire marshal, and that person. Precinct one, I don't know if we talked about it, but you're the Dukes and Carolyn's line of, forty nine, nine ten seventy.
Right.
The balance of that's going in, go next to Carolyn.
Right.
Fifty cents at the fourth time, we set for the precinct three, part time vehicle, all the part time vehicle, fifty cents. And the other thing that I have is. And it's been done, there was a hundred thousand put in, retiring air insurance line up, it's still in it, and we want to put the other hundred thousand in this year, so we rolled the fund balance into it this year also. That's the only other thing we have. So it's gonna be a two hundred thousand dollar trouble in there. We hadn't passed the funds yet, sir, you're correct. Nothing is, take that spot.
So what fund balance you going to need?
The proposal, the. The insurance fund balance. Now, those that we have in there, we'll roll back into the health insurance fund balance. And what, the.
So you just roll it forward.
I roll forward. So if you go down to a hundred.
That makes, makes sense.
What's the word, the hundred?
Yeah, yeah, we should roll it forward.
We're rolling, we're rolling another hundred forward. So at least, as we're talking about, if revenue, she can invest that, at five percent, they're ten thousand dollars right there, you should go on. First they should, you know. So I don't know if I prepared that right, that's where I've got it.
Your motion.
Sir? No, it's two hundred.
That's right, oh, yeah. Where'd you get that hundred?
We could have asked you, given a hundred for my students, it's all called a hundred already to this year. We put, we, they, they, she kept it in there, so it's a hundred thousand, that's. They're thinking that if you go across sixty to seventy thousand, make this thing, but if you're having a little fund balance. They, they.
I guess I'm too thick headed, so we had a hundred thousand in your life, this year was current, now, last year, we put a hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
We didn't spend, uh, we didn't spend any, no.
So we're rolling, keep it in there, so.
So wait a minute, but how does you roll it enough? If you don't put another hundred thousand.
We could, we did it, we did it.
Well, that must have been, for maybe not what we're gonna do.
Well, I put eight, eight hundred thousand in there for coming out of this year's budget, but we hadn't, we hadn't established a fund balance, I guess you might say. Because if it didn't get spent, it takes somebody's insurance, because we ain't got.
As you said. You brought the eight hundred.
Eight hundred? A hundred.
Eight, you said eight hundred.
We put eight.
Oh, eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
I thought you said eight hundred thousand.
No, 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 yo, you check, you have a motion. You have a.
I said it, I didn't mean to say, no, sir, you retract that.
I said that for a bad outside.
I thought you said eight hundred thousand too.
I wanted to work on my enunciation.
Okay, okay.
So I did send there the two hundred thousand, so. And that's, that's the other fire marshal.
I'll say it.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Natuno. As for cited for the last hour and a half, second by Commissioner Mars. Uh, to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, but you don't, thank you very much. Eye number six, consideration discussion possible, vote to accept tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. I usually have you a motion that's typed up, ready to say, so let me. Let me, let me see what I can do about that. I put much of that way, I'm starting here.
It's a motion.
So I'd like the motion to set a tax rate of zero point five zero seven seven six for a hundred dollar penalty. Zero. Uh, oh, zero point five zero seven seven six. I have a motion by Commissioner Natuno. Second by Commissioner Brandon, any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, but you don't, thank you very much, gentlemen. And I'm sure we forgot something with that two hole of all, uh, motion. We'll just have to go back and do what we can notice too.
Because I got my whole line, she's here.
That's good. At this point, I entertain a motion to do a chair. Now, a motion by Commissioner Brandon, second by Commissioner Natuno, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes aye, but you don't, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.